We're ready.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, June 26, 2024. A little after 6 o'clock, we're here in City Council chambers at 345 High Street. We do have one public hearing this evening. It involves property located on Gorham and Baccarat Road here in the city of Hamilton. Roll call, please.
Moller.
Present.
Pullman. Ryan.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
The motion to excuse Vice Mayor Pullman for reasons known to City Council?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Now go to an offering of prayer by Councilmember Joel Lauer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Lord, please continue to bless this great community. As we approach the celebration of our Declaration of Independence, please guide our leadership in the spirit of our unity. Give us the ability to fight the good fight when necessary and uplift those citizens who are less fortunate. Bless our troops, our first responders, and all of our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have a special presentation by our Finance Director, Dave Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. Tonight, we're going to report on the RITA, the Regional Income Tax Agency, the 2024 Nonfiled Program. And let me start off by saying, RITA is our third-party administrator. I still remain as the Tax Commissioner, and we still remain or still have local control. So let me give you some background and history of the program. We actually did a nonfiled program back in 2022, and the years, the tax years we've requested to file were 2016 through 2020. We sent out over just, we sent out over just 13,000 letters, and then we followed those by about 10,000 administrative subpoenas. Administrative subpoenas go out to taxpayers that don't respond to the first nonfiled letter. The program identified liabilities due of $1.3 million. So that's people filing returns saying, hey, we owe this amount. And we collected about $659,000 by the close of the program. The current program, we're going to be requesting years 2018 through 2022 from the taxpayers. There's 19,800 accounts that have at least one tax year missing. Now, that's not all Hamilton residents. I'll give you an example. Today, taxpayer came in from the township. She was delinquent on years 19, 20, and 21. She owned rental property in Hamilton. So these could be folks that have a business that's running in Hamilton and live outside. So those are not all Hamilton residents. Letters will be mailed July 1st. Due date is July 29th. We are, believe it or not, with 19,000 letters, we're the second-largest municipality sending, sending these nonfiled letters. And if you're retired and receive pension income, Social Security only, Hamilton does not tax that. And you could be available or will be available for an exemption, and I'll show you an example of that. And it doesn't show up real well. That's, that's what we're putting together as an exemption certificate. We put these out each year in utility bills, and they're out there, but these will be available on our website. And it's real simple. If you look, if you're retired, pension income, Social Security only, you can check a box up top that says retired. You answer four questions. We've got to fix it. Says tax year 22, we'll fix that. But, you know, four easy questions. You answer that, you can mail it to RITA, you can mail it to us. We have a Dropbox out back on Court Street. You can put it in there. But it is important that you do respond to one of these two letters that you possibly get. Again, exemption forms can be found on our website. They can call 513-785-7153, and we can mail a form to them. We'll probably put them down in the library, you know, whatever's convenient for the folks to get these forms. If you don't respond to the, to the letter by July 29th, the administrative subpoenas will go out on August 5th, and then they'll be due back on August 26th. Again, it's important that you respond to this. Good chance that you're, you're exempt, but it's important that you respond to this. And then I was going to get back with council on August 28th and report how the program is going and some action steps that we may follow if folks don't respond to the two letters. With that, here's the contact information for RITA. They can contact the city's tax office. Right now, we're open Wednesdays, 9 to noon, in the utility customer service area. If demand picks up, we'll certainly increase hours. Please check out our website. And with that, do you guys have any questions at all regarding this program?
Yes, question. Good, Dave. These are administrative subpoenas, right?
Yes.
So there's no confusion. It doesn't mention anything like court on there or anything like that?
No.
Okay. I know there's increasing penalties and interest when it comes to not paying taxes, but not appearance for those administrative subpoenas, that just basically means if you don't show those interest of penalties, they're going to possibly still continue. Is that correct?
So right now, it's penalty and interest free?
Right.
However, after the due date of the subpoenas, September 1st, then we'll start tagging on the penalty and interest.
Okay. But these are administrative subpoenas, they're not court subpoenas, so nobody-
Right, they're not signed by a judge.
Nobody can get confused by the way it looks.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We now go to audience of citizens. Individuals who wish to make comments, may speak during this part of the agenda or when an item is up for vote on the City Council floor. Individuals who were to, who want to speak or retire to sign this audience of citizens book, the sheet has two names on it. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. We've got Jim Lotman first.
Good evening, Councilmen and Mayor.
Good evening.
I've complained about many times about, over, over on, off of, on Franklin Street, okay? And you're going on, I'm coming out, coming out, Ross going toward the actual city park, and there's cars parked illegally. They said, no parking here, to, for, parking here in front of that sign, they park illegally in front of that sign, all the time, even after I complained about it. The cops ain't doing much at all about this. They can't see around the corners. Why, I called about it, it doesn't do it all.
I think you raised the issue before about folks who park beyond the no parking sign. I know that there is enforcement going on and monitoring going on. If the problem continues at a particular intersection where the car is pulled up to the point where it could cause some line of sight problems, just please to contact us. If those cars-
Contact you many times, but never come, never come.
Well, I-
Only half an hour, never come, you know?
I advise you still do that, or, and if it's the same intersection where people are parking, somebody might be living in a house close to the intersection, and they're doing it constantly. That's something that you can make a note of, and contact, contact me if you want to. That's fine. You could possibly do a 311, that type of thing. But if it's a pattern of conduct at the same intersection, the same house, the same car, that's the easiest way to enforce those type of situations.
Same with different, different, a lot of times with different cars, they're parking side of the sign, says, no parking here to, to the corner, you know, in front of that sign, you know?
Thanks for bringing to our attention, but especially if it's a, it's a continuing situation, that's-
You can make money like that for the city.
Just contact us in the methods that I, that I advised, and like I said, you can always give me a call. Okay?
Right, take it.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Bob Harris, I believe is next.
They can't hear out in the hallway yet.
Bob, can you hear me outside? Thank you, I heard you outside, so. You can come in now, Bob. We could play Where's Bob?
Are you coming?
Oh, he's, he's not speaking. Okay. Well, have a good night, Bob. Feel free to keep listening. Okay, we now go to the consent agenda. That includes all staff reports, all caucus reports, all meeting minutes. And we always have a committee in the hall where City Council may ask questions, provide directions, or comment on reports. Is there a motion? The regular meeting being recessed, and the committee in the hall will take place.
So moved.
Second. Motion Member, Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to the caucus agenda. Please lead us through this, Mr. City Clerk.
Absolutely. Our first two items will be presented by our Finance Director, Mr. Dave Jones.
So this is the second supplemental appropriation of 2024. Last year at this time, we had four, so, you know, we've been doing really good sticking to the budget this year. And I've listed the significant items here on this report. So the general fund, we have $1 million. It's a cleanup for the parking lot, just catty corner over at MLK and High. It's required by the development agreement for the redevelopment of that property. We have applied for a grant with the Ohio Department of Development. It's pending. We don't know the results yet, but, you know, we should soon. The second item's almost $400,000. It's going to be a contribution to the Parks Conservancy. We sold a cell tower up at Potter's, the air rights, and we're passing that money through to the Parks Conservancy. They're going to repave the car paths up at the golf course. And then the 150,000, a lot of you know, that's the train depot restoration from the Community Foundation. Outside of the general fund, the refuse fund, you guys have seen this before, the $500,000 appropriated for landfill remediation. We haven't done that yet, and appropriations close out at year end. We had it on the 2023 supplemental, so we have to reappropriate it in 2024. Same thing, though, it's just remediation from the EPA at that site. As far as the infrastructure funds, we have 745,000 from the water fund, it's water system distribution. 246,000 for manhole rehabilitation of the wastewater fund, and then 122,000 fleet maintenance fund, it's purchase of EV, EV fleet vehicles, and those are grant proceeds. Any questions on that?
Real quick question, the landfill remediation, where's that going to take place at? Where, where is that?
I believe it's down on Pleasant Avenue.
Okay.
I'm not 100% sure, but I believe it's down Pleasant Avenue.
Great, great. I want to mention, we went into this committee of the whole at 6:10. I apologize for not putting that into the record.
So this is the 2025 tax budget. We present this to you guys at about the same time every year. It is required that we present this to you. It'll come via resolution, have the tax budget attached at the July 10th meeting, and then we submit it to the County Budget Commission. The County Budget Commission is the county auditor, the county treasurer, and the county prosecutor. It's the responsibility of that committee to, it's kind of a checks and balances. What they're looking for is ending fund, they're looking at your ending fund balance and your current year revenues, and then we estimate the appropriations, and the appropriations is what you guys will be tackling during the fall and the budget season. But the current, you know, the carryover fund balance and the current year revenues can, cannot exceed the appropriations, so they make sure you don't overappropriate your money. And then also, they're looking at, you know, your general obligation tax debt. Inside, within, within the 10 mil unvoted, unvoted millage, the county auditor is required, if you can't meet your general obligation debt, he can raise that and, and, you know, pay the, just pay the debt holders or the bondholders. There'll be a public hearing before the meeting on July 10th. We'll have the tax budget out on the website beginning July 1st. You can email me at dave.jones up there on the screen, or you can call 513-785-7170, and we can get paper copies to you. Any questions on that one?
Thank you.
Next up, agenda item number three will be presented by me. Hello, Mayor, Members of City Council, Members of the public. I'll have a short presentation about agenda item number three. This is a new D5J liquor permit application located at 218 High Street. The applicant is Chow Reno LLC. This is going to be a wine bar here, located in the same building as the art space, Lofts. This permit application deals with beer, wine, and liquor sales within a community entertainment district. That's the J part of this application. With it being a new liquor permit application, they are still going to have to go through our standard procedures with permits and inspections. I just wanted to let you all know that. That way, it's different than like a transfer, which is a whole different process. Do we have any questions about this application?
No? Okay, thank you.
Next up will be agenda item number four, presented by our Fire Chief, Mr. Thomas Eichelberger.
Mayor, Members of Council, Tom Eichelberger, Fire Chief from City Hamilton. What we're asking you to vote on is changes to the, to Chapter 1505 in the Fire Prevention Code for the City of Hamilton. As you know, we utilize the Ohio Fire Code here in the City of Hamilton. And currently, what the changes will be is, right now, with our current inspection process, we go out, we inspect local businesses. If we find any violations, we give notice of violations. They have 30-day timeline to fix their violation. We go back. Normally, we have a lot of very good business owners in town. If they have any violations, they fix them right away. We have no problem. Occasionally, we have folks that, that are delinquent and fixing their issues. They get an extension to fix their issues. If we go back and we find that these violations have not been corrected, then we begin the process of acquiring, or of working our way through the violation process. Right now, our only avenue of taking action on delinquent business owners in town is to take the violation to the state of Ohio. This is a very lengthy process and takes a lot of time and a lot of resources. What we're asking you to do is to approve these recommended changes, which would give us a more assertive approach with these extensive violations or unresolved violations. And we would be able to handle that in town locally with our own citation process, and it would be much more efficient, much more assertive, and the timeliness of getting these issues resolved would reduce tremendously. So that's, our process of conducting inspections will remain the same. The only thing we're asking you to change is to allow us to have this process locally instead of having to take everything to the state.
Right.
And, and if we would have to take something to the state, that route is also there as well. So that doesn't go away. We're just asking for this here locally to expedite the, the issues here in town. And, and the goal is safety. You know, the quicker we can get these violations resolved, the safer our residents will be.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just for clarification, Chief. So there is not then a third level that they could appeal beyond the zoning appeals here?
No. As far as I, as far as I'm aware, there is no further common police court? I can follow up and get back with you on that.
Okay, that's fine. I just, the way I understood this, it's intended to expedite it, but I didn't know if, it's just because we didn't have this step before and everybody had to go to the state, which seems like it. I wondered if it ended there, so.
Yes, I'll get back with you on that.
That's okay.
I'll send it to every one of you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? I'd say thank you for, for making this system or this procedure have local knowledge and local decision-making. What you said, I think, makes tons of sense as to why we're doing it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And next up for items five, six, seven, and nine will be presented by our Director of Neighborhoods and Planning, Mr. Brandon Sarber.
Good evening. I think I misunderstood that question Susan was asking about beyond the state, beyond the Board of Zoning Appeals for zoning issues, common police court is the next step, which is why I said that.
Okay, thank you.
This issue here is really just piggybacking off of what the chief had said. This piece of legislation simply memorializes the fact that the BZA will be the quasi-judicial board that will review those appeals. Any questions? All right. The next item is 210 South Monument, and this was a, an application to the Planning Commission for Conditional Use. The first floor of this building, and if you don't know the location here, we are between Court and Ludlow on South Front Street, across from the Fitton Center. The first floor of this building had been used as office, and the owner is proposing, has proposed to the Planning Commission, which approved, converting that back to residential as was obviously the original use of that structure. The owner intends to rent out that first floor as a short-term rental, and the parking for the site extends out onto Ludlow. Any questions? All right. Next item is 1000 Laurel Avenue. This property came before Planning Commission for a variance related to an auto use. At 1000 Laurel, there were a number of conditions that were placed. It's my understanding that the applicant has since applied for a building permit and is working through those processes, but has since satisfied all of the requirements of the planning department on that particular proposal. Any questions on this one? Moving right along. All right, we have another conditional use for conversion from office to residential. This one required two variances because the first floor was used as a storefront. This, a new owner of this property is really just bringing an existing use into compliance. It's been a number of years since that storefront was used as an office. I think it was pre-pandemic when it was the Bar Association or some attorney's office. But the prior owner had converted that storefront to an out-of-compliant use as residential. So the new owner, recognizing that, came for that variance to use that as it is currently being used, and would eventually like to bring that back to a commercial use, but for the time being, just wants to bring the existing use into compliance. The second variance was, we require one and a half parking spaces off-street for every unit, and this being two units, they would require three parking spaces. They only have two parking spaces in the back of this property, so their second variance is for one less parking space. But if you know the context of this area, there is a lot of parking on this particular block. Any questions?
All right. Do you want to save that for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for items eight and 13 will be a presentation by our Director of Engineering,
Good evening. This right-of-way dedication proposed here is really cleanup that we're performing throughout the town. Slivers of parcels, non-conforming parcels that really should have been right-of-way in some cases, maybe back in, in this case, all the way back to the 50s. We have a city surveyor now, Todd Baugh, and he's going through and slowly cleaning these up and making them public right-of-way as they were originally intended. You can see a portion of the roadway and the sidewalk actually is on city-owned property. So these are all already city-owned. The larger area there in red in the upper right contains a number of utilities, and so that's why that portion is so big. Are there any questions on this?
Thank you.
This is a request to accept a grant application. If we receive it, it was actually already submitted for the South Washington-New London intersection. I won't go into the history on that, but I will note that ultimately, the, the permanent solution that was recommended for that is a permanent traffic signal. Temporary signal was installed in January, is performing very well. The overwhelming reaction from the neighborhood has been positive to having that in place. At some point, congestion will become a problem there, so there's a proposal for a 300-foot westbound right turn lane in addition to the permanent signal. This is to OKI. This is the same funding that we received for the roundabouts on North Hamlet Crossing last year. We had talked about submitting and do still plan to submit an ODOT application for the same intersection. We'll know by October, probably as early as September, if we receive this application. The ODOT application's due in August. We'll withdraw that application if we're successful with this one. So we're essentially doubling our chances of receiving money. And that money would be about $1.3 million with approximately a $600,000 local match with construction occurring in 2028. Here's a picture of the intersection, but the right turn lane would impact that retaining wall that's along the, the upper portion of the aerial there. Are there any questions on this one?
I just want to say thank to all the folks in administration who worked on this, and probably quite a few people did. And I think it just shows that the, the system does work, the 17 Strong Framework, the Town Hall Framework, the people, you know, getting together, talking about it, and talking it out. So I think it all succeeded myself.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Alan, this really is the talk of the town. I can't believe how much people talk about it that don't even live on New London, but because they travel so much, and they're really glad that you're sticking with the light as opposed to roundabouts and all that, so it was well-received. Thank you.
Thank you. And kudos to Scott Hoover for leading this effort. It was our choice journey.
Yes, thank you.
Next up for agenda item number 10 will be a presentation by our Law Director, Ms.
Good evening, Mayor Moller, Members of City Council. Letitia Block, I am here related to a request to establish a new position in the Law Department for the victim's advocacy role. In recent years, the City of Hamilton has had victims advocates as contractors, and that's no longer a viable option. There are a number of things that have changed related to victims advocacy in recent years, namely, compliance with Marcy's Law. Marcy's Law is named after Marcy, who was killed and stalked by her ex-boyfriend in the 80s. And a number of states across the country have Marcy's Law on the books. It became a constitutional amendment in the state of Ohio in 2017. It became a codified law effective in April of last year, and that now has a number of requirements additional for the victim's advocate, for prosecutors, for the court, and there's a number of things that are necessary to ensure compliance with that law. So we are proposing that, as opposed to having a contractor, which is not a recommended model or a viable option to have that person be a full-time FTE for the city. Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Next up for items 11 and 12 will be a member of our Finance Department, Ms. Tamika
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, citizens. So, a lot of words on the first slide. In summary, we are attempting to do an amendment of fiscal year 2017 all the way up to 20- summary, we are attempting to do an amendment of fiscal year 2017 all the way up to 2013, 2023, of CDBG and home funds. This is our attempt to use every penny provided by HUD from our CDBG program, CDBGCV and home funds. In short, we anticipate spending approximately $328,000 on public facility improvements. Our way of determining what those, what became public facility improvements was, we ended up talking to some of our subrecipients and discussing with them some of the needs that they have for their facilities. So we talked to the YMCA, YWCA, Living Water, gosh, who else? It was a couple others. And long story short, through the use of these extra funds, well, not extra funds, but they were funds that we didn't use from previous years, we were able to discuss with them and determine that they had roof improvements, some needed kitchen improvements. For the YWCA, we're going to do an indoor playground. The $95,000, approximate $95,000 for housing activities is going to go to Neighborhood Housing Services for their down payment assistance program, and the CDBGCV funds are going to go towards public services. In addition to the funds that we are amending, we also received $51,937,000 from HUD. We are going to program those funds to go towards housing, housing activities, and that'll also be done through Neighborhood Housing Services. So this is summary of everything that was listed out in the previous slide. So you'll see the housing, and like I said, that's going to Neighborhood Housing Services, Public Facilities, to a number of different subrecipients, and Public Services. And then out of our home funds, we are doing an additional $111,000. That was also amended funds, so funds that we didn't use from previous program years. That will also go towards housing programs that'll be done through Neighborhood Housing Services. And this is the $51,937 that will go towards housing activities, too. I know I keep saying that, but it's a lot of housing activities that were needed at the time, but also public facility improvements. Any questions? I know that was a lot. I'm sorry.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do.
Ask number nap.
If you can, just put it in the capsule for us. When would these funds be transferred to, as you said, the proportioned share is going to housing. When might that happen?
Soon as we get, soon as I come back, and we have our public hearing, and we receive, everything is signed off by you all, we will get that money out the door. The goal is to get it out as quickly as possible. We, everyone, as it relates to the public facilities, they're ready. We have their paperwork. We've already warned them. The goal is to have the majority of the public facilities started no later than the first of October.
Super. There was more for the benefit of our audience and things, because we knew it would be soon, but importantly, it's a process, and it's going to be achieved and things for this year. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for the significant focus on housing as well.
Oh, no worries at all. Like I said, it was a good way to use every penny that HUD has provided, so.
Any other questions? Thank you on that one.
Last up for Agenda Item Number 14 will be a presentation by our Health Commissioner, Ms. Cindy Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here tonight to recommend changes to Chapter 17, Section 173301, fees and charges under the Health Department. The proposed changes are to our food licensing fees and our burial permit fees. There are also several new fee categories that are going to be added. Food licensing fees are calculated from a cost methodology that is based on the previous year's costs in the program. The cost methodology is required per the Ohio Administrative Code, and it incorporates our employee time spent in the programs, total wages, travel costs, equipment costs, training costs, administrative costs. Oops. Fees are increasing to cover our departmental costs after remaining the same for the past two years. However, the 2025 fees are mid-range for other local health 2024 fees. Temporary food operations and mobile fees are not changing. We are adding new risk categories for mobiles. Changes to the Ohio Administrative Code require mobile licensing to be separated into two categories, high-risk and low-risk, with low-risk being 50% of the high-risk fee. We are also adding a person-in-charge training fee category. Our department has been approved by the Ohio Department of Health and Ohio Department of Agriculture to offer a person-in-charge training to our food operators. The fee covers the cost of materials and staff training time, and you will see in an upcoming slide that the fee is in line with other health All of our fees have been approved by our Advisory Board of Health. Notifications have been sent out to all food operators, and I have not received any comments back concerning the changes. This is a slide which shows our proposed fees, including state costs. This slide shows our 2025 proposed fees in comparison with 2024 local health department fees. This slide shows our person-in-charge, Level 1 training fee in comparison with other local health departments. Our final fee change will be to our burial permit fee. Per the Ohio Revised Code, the new fee is to be $3 for the issuance of a burial permit. Our current fee is $2.50. With the fee change, we will be in line with the Ohio Revised Code requirements. Does anyone have any questions concerning our changes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy. Okay, that takes care of it, correct? Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, that concludes.
I'll accept the motion. The committee, the whole be closed?
So moved.
Second. Motion of Councilmember Fier, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:39. I'll accept the motion. Is regular meeting be reconvened?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Fier, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
And that's at 6:40. Then I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that with the exception of the item so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur in their recommendations.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is also carried, and it's 6:40. Now going to the public hearing. Now I'll send the motion. It's regular meeting be recessed, and a public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Ryan, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:41. Please read a public hearing to the record.
A public hearing regarding a preliminary and final planned development located at 310 Gorham Drive, 1580 Baccarat Drive, proposal to allow two detached single-family structures on a vacant parcel, zoned RPD residential plan development with variances, with three variances, three to the zoning ordinance, Josh Agricola, Justin Doyle Homes, applicant. And we do have a presentation from our Director of Neighborhoods and Planning. We can conclude that.
Hello again. This particular development, we talked about at last City Council meeting, so just to kind of review the variances that are proposed. The first variance is a variance to the brick-or-stone requirement. There are other sections of our code that contemplate a hardy plank board inciting as somewhat of a masonry material. In this particular section of the code, it is not, so they're asking for a variance, but still using very high-quality materials. The second variance is to the 20% common open space, as is custom with larger developments. This being just two single-family homes is one of the reasons why the Planning Commission voted to approve that variance. And the second relates to lot frontage, and because these two properties are being developed off of private stub streets, they do not meet the current requirement as it relates to frontage. So those are, that's a brief explanation of the three variances requested. Still outstanding, the last time that I was before you was the issue related to stormwater. It is my understanding that agreement has been reached and signed off on by our Engineering Department, the HOA, and the developer and property owner. This just gives you some context for the site as it currently sits, and an elevation of the home there at Gorham. You can see Ridgeway Elementary in the distance. And then here, we have 1580 Baccarat, which will sit, this is the one that had the conflict with the stormwater easement. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Sarber? Thank you, sir. We have three people who signed the book for this public hearing. Kim Gibson, do you wish to speak at this public hearing? Okay. Christina Lewis? Not this time? Okay. Then I've got the gentleman from architecture firm. Does he wish to speak at this time? No? Okay. Is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak at this, about this development? Okay. I don't know if you did, but if you don't, that's fine. Anyone else in the audience who wants to speak at this public hearing, which involves a preliminary and final planned development located at 310 Gorham, 1580 Baccarat, with the variances? Anyone else in the audience wish to speak at all about this particular preliminary and final planned development? Okay. Anyone on council wish to be heard or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
Move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:44. I'll accept the motion. Is regular meeting be reconvened?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Fier. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Okay, time for that reconvene, the regular meeting, is 6:45. Okay. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items. And now I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Lauer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:45. We now go to pending legislation, Agenda Item Number 16, second reading of an ordinance involving some easements.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase of a temporary easement and two permanent easements located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, Hamilton Beltline Phase 3, Parcel 8, In lots number 28669 and 29046, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Moller?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 6-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number 17, second reading of an ordinance involving amending our zoning ordinances regarding residential design standards.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Section 1800 Residential Design Standards, City of Hamilton, applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Comments, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 6-0.
We go to Agenda Item Number 18, second reading of an ordinance also amending our zoning ordinances for, in various sections.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Section 1250 zoning use chart, Section 1400 accessory uses, Section 1500 land area setback and density standards, Section 1600 off-street parking, Section 1700 signs, and Section 3900 glossary, City of Hamilton, applicant, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fier.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Fier, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Comments, discussion, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 6-0.
And we now go to new legislation, Agenda Item Number 19, rescuing of an ordinance involving what was discussed at the public hearing, the preliminary and final planned development proposal for Gorham and Baccarat addresses with the variances.
An ordinance approving a preliminary and final planned development, PD planned development proposal for 310 Gorham Drive, 1580 Baccarat Drive to allow two detached single-family structures on vacant property, zoned RPD residential planned development with three variances to the Hamilton zoning ordinance, HZO, Josh Agricola, Justin Doyle Homes, applicant, first reading.
Thank you. We now go to Agenda Item Number 20, which is a resolution involving side lot 333 South Sea Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 333 South Sea Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 6-0.
We go to Agenda Item Number 21, which is also a resolution involving our side lot program, 522 North Sixth Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton's urban renewal area to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 522 North Sixth Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the motion be approved, or the resolution be approved.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Fier. Comments or questions on this one? Okay, roll call vote?
Moller?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 6-0.
And we now go to Agenda Item Number 22, which is a resolution involving resurfacing of State Route 127.
A resolution for preliminary consent legislation with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, relative to allowing ODOT to resurface State Route 127 located within the City of Hamilton Corporation limit and to authorize the city manager to enter into a local public agency, LPA, agreement with ODOT to allow ODOT to resurface the city portion of State Route 127, North Third Street, within the City of Hamilton.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Any discussion or comments at this time? Okay, roll call vote?
Moller?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fier?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 6-0.
Now go to the audience of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, I just want to acknowledge the Neighborhood Summit that occurred this past Saturday. Thank 17 Strong for organizing that. There was an all-star team, city staff, who assisted in the summit, but in our debrief this week, there were two employees who particularly distinguished themselves. I'll call them MVPs of our all-star team, and that was Sarah Silva and Bill Kraft. I want to thank them for their efforts. I know I had a chance to speak with them personally to acknowledge their efforts, but just wanted to do that publicly as well. Thank you.
Audience of council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
So I just want to say that I had an opportunity on Saturday night to experience the BCRTA, the free transportation that's running around the city. Outstanding. I can't remember the last time I rode a bus in Hamilton, but I would encourage everyone to do it. Parked downtown, had dinner, got on the bus, went over, got off right at the door at Spooky Nook, was able to go in, came back, ended up stopping up farther north on Main Street and visited another establishment, and it was great. It was really, really nice to have that. It's free. It's going to be running for two months, so I would encourage you. There are 11 stops on the route, so you can park anywhere. Don't try looking for a parking place. Don't try looking for a parking place anywhere downtown. Wherever you find a place, catch the bus. I would encourage you to use it.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lauer?
I want to thank our staff members who came out after hours down to Jefferson Park for Mr. Buchheit's cookout. It was quite an event, but we had a large number of our city staff that attended, and I just appreciate it. I think that shows that our staff cares beyond the workday, so I appreciate that. Also, we've had an uptick in business in our Main Street and High Street corridor. Man, I would encourage everybody to get on, download the app, explore Hamilton. There are many events that are posted on there at times that not everybody is aware of. There's many other items that you can get on and access things in Hamilton. The great app, it also gives a lot of notoriety to our businesses within the city, and it is made for our citizens as well as people coming in from out of town.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, let me add one last thing. This weekend, there's going to be a dedication of the mural that's under the High Main Bridge, Envision Partnerships. It's, the mural is the heart of Hamilton. It will be at 11:00 AM. Prior to that, there's going to be a paddling on the river. It's free, it's an activity that anyone can participate in. You have to register. There's also a bike tour that morning at 9:00 AM. Both of those start right around Markham Park. So 9:00 AM, you could ride a bike throughout Hamilton. You'll have a kind of a guided tour of murals, and it'll culminate under the bridge. And then there's also a river cleanup from 9 till 11 on Saturday morning.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I also want to say, did you want to say anything?
No.
I just want to say that it was a great neighborhood summit, and you know you're doing something right when council members from other cities happen to visit what your city's doing. And they were there, there are at least three of them there, I believe. I also want to thank city volunteers who are involved at Rivers Edge, Green Team, and Daniel Tideman's volunteering something as well. Would you like to say what you're volunteering, Mr. Tideman? What you're doing? Would you like to mention that, Mr. Tideman, now or do you want to do it later?
I'm totally unprepared for this.
But that's okay, I mean, it's.
Totally unprepared.
No, just give us an idea of what you're volunteering and what you're doing.
When I first started at the city of Hamilton, in my interview, it was kind of agreed upon that I could grow out my hair as long as I kept it clean and eventually donated my hair. So somebody approached me a couple of years ago saying that an ex coworker of mine had done an event in 2017, raised money for the Rivers Edge Concert Series, as well as publicly shaved his head. And this individual told me I could probably get a decent amount more money since I've got a lot more material to work with. So over the past five or six years, I've grown out my hair. I've done, as you can tell by the theme of the poster, I'm also a fan of heavy metal music. I've done a lot of air guitaring and head banging, and I think I've gotten my fill. So in support of a good cause in supporting Rivers Edge, which is a major asset to our community, it draws visitors from all around the country that, that visit our shops, they eat in our restaurants, and through the power of music itself, it's a great asset to our community. So the monetary donations would support the concert fund in bringing in better bands in Hamilton, but the hair donation will go to an organization called Hair We Share. In the 11 years that they've been operating, they've donated about half a million wigs to people that have experienced medical hair loss. So in this case, my hair will go to somebody in need and it'll make, help them go through this experience that they're currently going through, so.
How can you contribute to this?
Well, there is a QR code on that flyer, which will take you to the Hamilton Community Foundation site. At this time, any donations that go through to the concert fund will be tracked and we'll kind of keep track of them along the way. If you would prefer a, like a link to a website, I can provide that as well. Just reach out to me after the meeting. But yes, August 4th, 2 o'clock, CFG and the Family, which is our local blues talent and international blues challenge finalists of 2024, they've marked the date to make the cut. So that's a summation of that.
Very cool.
Does that elicit any comments from council? I'm sure we've got a lot of comments about this. No, thank you for volunteering your hair and just coming up with this idea. Everybody's going to win.
And making another event for us, that's very cool.
Also, I want to say July 4th Parade is coming up, it's next Thursday. Actually, it's the entire July 4th day. The parade, the music, the fireworks, it's all old-fashioned July 4th. It's kind of, it's a big crowd for the parade to celebrate our independence, to show appreciation to veterans, military, listen to the music, and to say hi basically to your neighbors, because a lot of your neighbors are in this parade. We've also got Reds mascots, a couple of retired Cincinnati Bengals are going to be in the parade as well. We played in a couple of Super Bowls. This is going to be a great day. It's going to go down Dayton Lane, so you'll get a chance to, if you stand around there, you'll see porch parties, and there's a lot of good activity in our, in our city. Music is that arena group and fireworks in the evening, so another old-fashioned July 4th. Anyone else on council, Anthony, want to say at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I can't let it go unnoticed. This is the first time in a long time Rich Engel has not spoken in the caucus agenda. I kept waiting for his name, and he never showed up.
Well...
He won't say much anymore either.
Okay.
Would you like to say something from the podium, Rich, at this time?
Want to say goodbye to us?
Do you want to say something up here? Okay.
Just noticed it.
Okay, anyone else on council? Okay, it's a request for a executive session, Mr. City Manager?
There is, Mr. Mayor, for the purpose to confer with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of imminent court action and to consider the appointment, employment or compensation of a public employee or official.
Okay, is there a motion that council go into executive session for the stated purposes given by the city manager?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nav, second by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?